So, thank you all for being here. I just wanted to get out, first things first. Please, everyone, silence your phones so that we can have a...turn our attention fully to our candidates and the questions. Oh, hi Sheri.
Hi.
Hi. Oh, you're right there, yeah. Just in time, Sheri. All right. And then, just wanted to let everybody know that the forum is being livestreamed and recorded, so...which is exciting. So, you should be able to share this with folks who weren't able to come, and hopefully we have people watching right now. So, my name is Darcy Boyer. I am a member of LEJA, or Lowell Education Justice Alliance. I have a child who is a sophomore at Lowell High School, and so this is very important for me and everybody here. So, we're going to go over the guidelines and the rules for how the day...how the evening is going to go. I believe we're going to have that on the screen. So, equal time...I'll read it out, too, so, sorry. So, there's going to be equal time for all candidates. Each candidate will have the same amount of time to answer every question. Responses will be limited to one minute for the long-form, open-ended questions. The quick round questions will be yes or no only, without any opportunity to explain further. You should see your little...yep, you got them. Oh, wow, okay, this is getting complicated. No additional time will be given to elaborate on yes or no, or maybe, or no comment. Respectful dialogue. This forum is about ideas, not personal attacks. Candidates must speak respectfully about each other, their opponents, and community members. Stay on topic. Questions tonight are focused on Lowell: budget, transparency, and council, housing, and education. Answers should address the question directly and specifically. No interruptions, one candidate at a time. Only one candidate speaks at a time. Please do not interrupt, talk over, or heckle opponents. This is for all of us. Audience participation. Audience members are asked to remain quiet during the questions and responses. No cheering, clapping, or disruptions, so we can hear every candidate clearly. Time will be provided at the end for community engagement, if the format allows. Time limits will be enforced. Timekeepers...timekeepers will signal when you have 30 seconds left, 10 seconds left, and the moderator will stop you if you continue beyond your time. This is to ensure fairness to everyone. Then finally, opening and closing statements. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement before the questions and a final closing statement at the end of the forum. Sound okay? All right, great. So, we're going to get started. First, we're going to have the opening statement, and for this particular one, we're going to go alphabetical. We'll mix it up, and hopefully Neela will explain how we're mixing it up when we get there, when it's time to answer the questions. So, it looks like Sheri, you're on for your one minute.
All right, thank you. Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you for coming out. Thank you for being here. Thank you to all the rest of the candidates that are here this evening. My name is Sheri O'Connor-Barboza, and I'm running in District 5 for City Council. And the reason that I am running and I am here is for transparency. Our residents need to know what's going on with our checkbook in the city and understanding where our money is going. So, we pay really great taxes, and we'd like to know. I'd also like universal pre-K and before and after-school care, like some of our charter schools have, so we can get our kids into Lowell Public Schools instead of just our charter schools and have it all throughout. And I'd like a solution to the unhoused and also our disabled and elderly community. We really need to be looking into their concerns. Thank you.
Do I just go? We're just...okay. Hi, everyone, my name is...
You all know what you're doing. Good.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah, all right. Hi, everyone, my name is Marcos Candido. For those of you who don't know me, I'm running for District 8, City Council. I was born and raised in this city by two immigrant parents. I went through our public school system. After that, after graduating Lowell High, I went to get my neuroscience degree at Johns Hopkins University and then studied addiction at the National Institutes of Health. I also spent my two years there helping organize for our union, UAW 2750, which was the largest federal union to form in over 10 years. So, I'm really proud of that experience. I want to bring my data-oriented mindset and union-organizing experience into City Hall to fight for solutions that are proven to work in uplifting our working-class families. That means increasing access to affordable housing, better public transit, and fully funding our schools and not cutting millions of dollars back on it, as we did this year. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Pardon the short mic cable. My name is Wayne Janess. I've...I'm running for reelection here in District 4, which comprises downtown, part of Act Central, chunks of Centerville, Paddockville, and the acre. It's kind of the mini-at-large district. My day job is working as an IT professional for a software company, so I bring kind of a data-oriented and systems mindset to the city's problems and trying to solve them and just uplift life for everyone here: residents, our businesses, and our students and our visitors. I love this city. I first moved here at the end of...in 2005, and I've been a downtown resident since the end of 2009. I really enjoy the work. Thank you for that. I really enjoy the work that being on the council has...the opportunities the council...being on the council has provided to me to make better connections to my community and everyone who works hard day in and day out to make Lowell a better place. So, thank you.
It's on? Okay, thank you. Hi, I'm Belinda Duran, and I'm delighted to be here. I'm running for City Council in District 3, which is Belvedere and a little bit of South Lowell. I grew up in a working-class and immigrant family in Queens, New York, but education was my path forward. I got a scholarship to college, which led to my first career as a software engineer. I then later went to business school and law school and became a contract lawyer. So, I think I bring problem-solving skills to City Council. My husband and I moved Lowell 18 years ago because of its diversity and vitality. I'm quite engaged in nonprofit boards and other projects around the city. I listen, I learn, I show up and do the work, and I'm ready to be the City Councilor in District 3. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Sidney Liang. I'm running for City Council, District 7. I've been in the city of Lowell since 1987. I have two children here, and they've gone through the Lowell Public School System. My professional life is that I've been working in the healthcare field for over 25 years. So, one of my focuses is looking into how we use our multicultural, multilingual set of ideas and issues in the community and bring it up and make sure everybody understands what's going on in our district. Also, looking at transparency. Transparency is not only just what you see, it's what you hear and what you learn. So, speaking English is not transparency enough. So, we have to make sure that everybody understands what's going on in City Hall and learn and give ideas. The other thing also is financial responsibility. We need to know what's going on in the City Hall. Our money is very hard-earned. Money need to spend wisely and should be accountable for. Thank you.
Sorry, I was making sure you were good. Okay. Hi. It's like I want to make sure the timers are...hi, I'm Shawn...my name's Shawn McDonough. I am running for City Council in District 4. I live on Market Street above Brood Awakening with my wife and one-year-old son, and I am a special education teacher at Lowell High School. I've been teaching at Lowell High School for three years. I have a hard time counting school years. I am running because it says it on my T-shirt. I believe that we can have nice things, things like parks, parking that works for all of us and pedestrian safety. Nice things are not leftover parking meters sticking out of the sidewalk. Excuse me, I have back-to-school sickness. Accessible sidewalks, parks, and green space that are accessible to all of our city's residents in trying to find creative solutions to make that work. I played pickleball recently on the top of the parking garage. I'm going to skip right to the part where I say my name one more time, Shawn McDonough, and I am a special education teacher at Lowell High School. Shawn McDonough, thank you.
No, I can't talk about it. I can't rebut it, but I...great job. Hello, everyone, and thank you for being here. You could be anywhere else, but you chose to be here because you're concerned about our city. You're concerned about the people that represent you, so I admire you for taking time out of your busy schedule to be here. My name is Rita Mercia, and I'm running as an at-large candidate throughout the whole city. I'm running to continue the good work that I started 30 years ago to make a difference in our city. I want to provide the best constituent service that you have every right to expect and deserve. I want to be your messenger. That's all we are, is messengers. I want to bring your problems, your ideas, your concerns for your...from your table to City Hall. Together, we can solve problems while making the city a better place, and I think we've done that over the years. Please don't let my longevity fool you. It is called experience. I have much experience. I could go on forever, but I know that I can't. I...time, thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I want to thanks the organized team for organized this forum and LTC for hosting it. I'm a father of two. My two kids are product of Lowell Public School. I spent years serving the people of Lowell with one guiding principle: steadfast commitment. In public service, real change doesn't happen overnight. It happens when you show up consistently and stay true to your value and also refuse to give up the issue that you stand for. And that's what I've been doing the last eight years. So, I'm running for reelection to the council at large. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ozo. I'm running for at-large City Council. It's going to be a write-in campaign. We're going to be handing out stickers and things like that to make it easy for you, but the name's simple enough, Ozo, O-Z-Z-O. So, I guess the best way to describe me would be to kind of list off the activities I'm involved in in the city. The first and foremost would be Rights Tenants Group at LTLC. I mean, while we're not exactly where we'd like to be, we've made enormous strides, and we'd like to better services at Lowell Transitional Living Center and for the rest of the city because if we're served properly, the rest of the city won't have to deal with the mess that spilled over onto the street. We deserve better programming, better conditions, so on and so forth. Other things I'm involved in, I'm a member at the Arts League of Lowell, Brush Arts...Brush Art Gallery. I volunteer with Lama, Lowell Emergency Housing Coalition, Solidarity Lowell. I've been a fighter in the Golden Gloves. I'm just ready to fight for you guys and stand up for really everything we have coming to us. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Rataiyem. My family and I came from Cambodia after the war, and my four children, including my wife, attending public school, budget school, then move on to the UMass Lowell. I'm honored to serve you as a Vice Mayor and the City Council Representative District 7. Over the past four years, my colleague and I worked hard to make Lowell, especially the acre, a better place for family, businesses, and future generation. My guiding value is based on the word acre. A for affordable housing and infrastructure. C for community safety, quality of life. R for respect and honor our veteran and elders. E for economic development, education, and environmental stewardship. Together, we can keep building a stronger, safer, and more sustainability...sustainable and inclusive Lowell, one acre at a time. Thank you.
Thank you all. Nice job. So, one other important thing I should probably mention is the bathroom is right around the corner there, the back of the curtain there, in case anyone needs that. So, we're going to move into the first long-form question. I'm going to turn it over to our moderator. We'll have a different moderator for each of the sections. Neela will introduce themselves and let you know what you're going to be doing.
Hello, everyone. My name is Neela. So, long-form questions, you each have a minute to answer these questions, and I will...moderators will let you know who will be starting, and going forward, you just go down the line just so that everyone has a chance to answer first. So, the first question is, if you were to make one change to Lowell's budgetary priorities moving forward, what would it be? And we are starting with Wayne.
Hi there. Thank you for the question. So, I think that everybody talks about how a budget reflects a city's values, and everyone likes to look at our budget document and say, "What are we doing? What are we trying to accomplish here?" And I think that one important thing to note is that we, as city councilors, we can't directly add anything to the budget. Our role is only to cut things. That's the only power that we have under a Plan E form of government. We can only cut items from the budget, we cannot add to it. So, I would like to see us figure out a way to do some participatory budgeting with the community. The city manager did that last year, had some listening sessions and had people in to really understand what people are asking for in the community, and I want to see us do more of that. I think it's important for me to have the conversation with the city manager and say, "Hey, you know, we really got to improve a park here," or whatever, but I think it's more important to hear it from the community. So, I want to really try to emphasize that through the next few budget cycles, and that's my time. Thank you.
So, one of the things that I have heard from residents is that they want to...is it...
Yeah, can you... Is it...okay. Is it going to reach? Okay. Here.
This isn't going to hurt your time, just so you know. No, thank you. Oh, yeah, this is much better. So, many residents have asked how our tax dollars are being spent, and communication is one of the key things that I think we need to improve upon in terms of how residents get information from City Council and city administration and how that information gets shared back. Part of it is understanding the budget because the 750-page document is not one that residents are going to read. So, summarizing what year-over-year changes are in a way that's accessible to people is going to be important moving forward. And then, we can all understand better where the priorities are, how money is being spent, and residents then will feel more enabled to bring forward where their priorities are, which will help us all come up with a better budget. So, thank you.
Thank you. Again, I just want to provide information to our community that our job mostly is just like a board of directors, and city manager will provide us with a budget, and we can look over it and review it. But I do agree with Belinda, it's just like this thing, and it has to go into my Cambodian head and then just translate into an English one, so it's going to take even longer for me. But at the same time, I urge the community to raise their concern, their preference, and what they want. This is how important it is to get out and vote, and you just want to make sure you come out and express your opinions. Otherwise, other people's opinion will matter more than you. The other thing I want to add also is that since I come from healthcare field, I want to focus a little bit more on mental health, maybe urging, asking the city manager to look into a mental health condition, into the programs and house inside the city of Lowell, and this is something that I'm looking forward to. Thank you.
Is this on? Is it working? Is it...and time, okay. Am I...I'm going to wait. Sorry. Thank you. Okay. Yes. So, the rhythm has been killed, but here we go. I would like to see the city prioritize budgeting and investing in the future of the city, which is a platitude of a way to say, "Fully funding our schools, our public spaces, expanding our parks and public spaces, and making them more accessible, inviting, and like full of amenity that makes people want to use them." On fully funding schools, I understand that the city council can't pull out a checkbook and write it, but I'll say it right now. I think that when you look at the Chapter 70 reporting from the state, you'll see that Lowell...our most recent report says that Lowell funded Lowell Public Schools at 104%. Haverhill is around 114%. Lawrence is at 95%. I would like to see Lowell get to 110%. I think that's a nice immediate goal to shoot for. I'd love to go higher. I got 10 seconds left. Thank you.
Are you done? Thank you.
Don't you see me on a doorknob?
Okay, darling. When we talk about the budget, there's three things you can do with a budget. You can approve...vote to approve that budget. You can decrease that budget, but you cannot add on to the budget, but you can send it back. You can send it back. And this very council did that. We did that. We sent it back to the city manager because we heard from Liam Skinner, the superintendent of the schools, and he said, "Four million dollars was cut. Can you help us?" We didn't approve of that budget. We sent it back. He brought us at least $2 million, and we supported $2 million. Education is very important. So, and I want you to know, MVCLC, Mayor McFally Central Labor Council with the teachers' union, they endorsed me. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you for the question. So, I concur with my colleague who's on the council now, Wayne Janess, and Rita Mercia with regard to the budget. I also understand that the budgetary participation sessions start about two years now. I proposed that. Came from Cambridge, right? Everyone here and everyone at home need to show up and speak up. If you don't, it's not going to hurt, not going to get hurt. If you care about issues of public safety, education, and other things, show up and speak up, and that's how you get things changed. Also, this election is really important. It make a difference of how the budget's going to be like this year. It's okay. Next year, you're going to have a serious budget cut. So, let's get our head together, come together, go to that budgetary session for the next year. Otherwise, not going to be a whole lot of change. Thank you.
So, as far as budgetary priorities moving forward, aside from the schools, I think we should be making proactive moves such as, instead of a parking enterprise, which I don't know how much money that makes, and it just aggravates everybody, start up things like a boxing enterprise. I see boxing promotions all over the place, highly successful selling-out arenas. It can make the city money. It would, you know, encourage healthy living, participation. Things like this need to be invested in. You know, instead of plunging money into things as a cost, we need to look at things like an investment, and that would benefit the community. So, that would be one of the many ideas that I've actually brought forward about a year and a half ago. Still haven't really heard anything from anybody. So, thank you very much. That would be one of the ideas. So, thank you.
Thank you for the questions, and Lowell is a Plan E government, and we, the councilor, and I'm one of them too, of the 11, that we, as a...in the companies, we are the board of directors, and we hired a CEO, which is a city manager, and we hired CFO. They put together the budget for us to review, and I can sympathize with the resident who cannot really understand the budget, including myself, but the difference is that I had an opportunity to ask our CFO to see what line item is all of this about. The budget is also classified based on the priorities that 11 councilor have told the city managers put in. For us, it's quality of life, affordable housing, and healthcare, education are four area that we are asking manager and his team to do. And as you can see...
And that is time. I'm sorry. So, this next question, we are going...oh, I'm so sorry. Go ahead. Sorry. Even I'm not getting it right. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Sheri O'Connor-Barboza, and I appreciate everyone's responses. My budgetary priorities would be ticketed individuals that go through bus signs, you know, those stop signs that everyone continuously is going through, and our schools are not safe, so we can just plant the police there, and we'd have a big profit, and then everyone would start following the rules. We need to look at more grant writing. I'm sure that it's happening, but we can look at more, and there's tons of grants that Lowell is eligible for right now, and I don't know if they're looking into it. We have the opportunity of applying for a bus that could get our elderly to and from the senior center more easily, and that would be free. Restore and expand the school budget, as many people have talked about. Social works and rides for disabled residents and elderly instead of using an ambulance that the police have to call because they can't get from point A to point B. If we have a safe place...
And that is time. I apologize.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Goodness, sorry. Could you read the question real quick again? At this point, I've forgotten it.
No worries. If you were to make one change to Lowell's budgetary priorities moving forward, what would it be?
Okay. Well, again, everyone, my name is Marcos. I've talked about it my whole campaign. My eyes are set on entirely uplifting our working-class families, so my priorities have, you know, been affordable housing, public transit, and fully funding our schools and childcare. So, I won't, you know, talk about funding the schools. You know, everyone has sort of mentioned it. We have to restore that funding and even go beyond that. Our schools are critical. So, I'll focus my energy on talking about how we should pressure our, you know, city manager into actually using the money properly. You know, we have 25 million...he has, you know, a discretionary fund of like $25 million, and he's using it to refill the same potholes that are just going to arrive year over year. You know, we have...if we have $25 million, we should be rapidly improving our transit system so we can actually boost our local economy and move people around, you know, quickly, efficiently, make our streets quieter, safer. That's one thing I think I would try to change or try to pressure to change. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, just as a reminder, if we ever forget the question, it is behind you. So, if you're waiting for your turn... No, don't even worry about it. So, this next question, we will be starting with Sidney, and the question is, "One of the responsibilities of the city council is evaluating the city manager. The current city manager's contract will be up for renewal during the next city council term. What criteria should be most important when evaluating a city manager?"
Personally, I like city managers to...for one, not a politician, maybe somebody who's a businessperson that can look into improving the city in all corner of the city. Of course, I think city manager Golden has been doing a really great job in terms of, according to what he planned it to do. So, I don't have an objection on that, but I would like to also looking into him and his team going out into the community and communicate and converse with the community some more. There's a lot of hidden issues in the community that his teams should be going out and dig it up so that we can improve the quality of life in all corner of the city. Thank you.
Shawn McDonough. Everyone else is saying their name before they talk, so I've got a few looks. Shawn McDonough. I think that when evaluating the city manager, one, the current city manager is doing a good job, right? Most city managers that are outgoing state reps all wind up doing about a good job. That's what we do in Lowell, I guess. I agree with you, actually, Sidney. What I would like to see as a move for the city of Lowell to say something that Jack is seriously shaking his head no at me for, I think that it's time for all of us to have some participation in evaluating the city manager, and I think that one way to do that would be to move for a charter review on a municipal election ballot and form a committee that would then take a look at the city's charter and decide if something like actually letting a popular election for a mayor be a binding referendum. It wouldn't be a binding referendum anymore. We would actually get a say in who runs our city. Thank you. Shawn McDonough.
Rita Mercia. I just want to say that when we look on the qualities of a city manager, to me, it's a very, very important, number-one communication. What you know, I want to know. I want this council to be on the same page, and this city manager does that. A city manager is only... A city manager is only as good as those as he surrounds himself with. He's got a Don Dynamite crew. He's got Sean Machado, that poor bugger. I could have 30 motions on the agenda every single week, but I call that man and I say, "I need this done. I need that done." I had a woman here in the neighborhood meeting, downtown neighborhood meeting. She wanted a loading dock sign on a building. I got the sign man to make one. He's going to give it to me tomorrow. I'm going to try to find that lady and give it to her. So I could go on about the city manager. He's doing a tremendous job, and you wouldn't really know that unless you're there. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you for the question. It's critical when you select a city manager, it's one that you believe in, one that be more transparent in terms of communication, not just to you as a council, but to the community. Also, one that recognize and see the diversity of the city and making sure that the people that serve the city reflective of the community. All the department, not just one, all the department. You have 2/3 of Asian-American live in the city of Lowell. But you look at the force, police, fire, DPW, and so on. That's not reflective of the community that we serve. I understand changes take time. I'm here. I'll continue to be here to see that change happen with all your help and the help of, you know, going forward.
And that is time. I apologize.
We'll make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. So the criteria that's most important for evaluating a city manager, to me, would be to listen to the constituents' input. I'll just say, when me and my friends go there, he just seems to speak down to us, you know, like the good old boys' club and whatnot. You know, I know he's doing his job, but, okay, this is how I would hold him accountable, and not just him, but any city manager, is to have 30, updates on every single motion that goes to his desk every 30 days and to be posted on the city website so that anybody who brings it forward knows where it is. If it's no movement, it's no movement, and that's okay. We, at least, we know where it is. I brought, again, the boxing gym up a year and a half ago. I don't know. I've checked with him personally. I've reached out several times. Nothing, nothing, nothing. So it would really help if motions that are passed, if the citizenry would know what the heck is going on with them and not have to bring it forward again. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When we hire someone, we have a job description. I'm in my real estate business, so before I hire an agent, I have a job description. And then, in the job description, qualification and all of that. And then, what we do is we evaluate it based on what we set forth. For all the councilor, we have that criteria, and we evaluating on his accomplishment. And I, for one sense, say, he has done a really good job as a city manager, listening to all the councilor who represent district, including myself. He got in the car with me. I show him what need to be done, and he took care of the neighborhoods, the street, the sidewalk, all of that, that was put up to him. So that's my way to evaluating the city manager, and all of us do the same thing. We have a criteria we evaluating him by and the score. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Shari Barboza, again. In regards to evaluating the city manager, the first thing that I would do on a motion would be to open all of the accounts so that everyone can see them, so we can have, like, see-through, you know, that they have at the state level. I don't really know everything that he's doing because there's no transparency. I don't feel that transparency. I'd like to know, you know, who paid for the trip to Geneva. I'd like that, you know, just right out there in part of the transparency. So to evaluate the city manager, all of that transparency needs to be there because the residents are the ones who are voting us in, but yet it seems like the city manager is controlling things, and we pay the taxes, and whether we rent or we own, and I really, I need that transparency to give that report card. Thank you.
Well, I'll concur with what Sean said earlier. I think first, we should be electing a strong mayor and not appointing one. And a couple points, I mean, if this is the same city manager that put forth a budget that took $4 million away from our school, he's not doing good in my head. If this is the same city manager who's pro-developer, anti-affordable housing, he's not doing good in my head. If this is the same city manager who's deciding to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars on our roads but not actually improve our urban planning, he's not doing good in my head. So that's my answer.
Thank you. So I think the most important thing to look at is the team that the manager puts around him and the results thereof. You can't really make these decisions based on gut feelings. It's all about data, for me. Since we've implemented the 3-1-1 system, I think that gives us a whole other, a whole new lens to look at the performance of the city manager and his team, to see what's getting done, what's not getting done, how long things take to get done. And I think that's all extremely important. I will also note that this question presumes that his contract is up for renewal. The council actually extended his contract. I was, I think, the only person to vote against that extension. The reason I voted against it was not because I thought Tom was doing a bad job. It was because I thought it was, it was too early to do that. His existing contract would have been up in 2027, and it's been extended beyond that now. So I just thought that's an interesting point to make here. But like I said, I do think Tom is doing a good job, and I will continue to evaluate the data as we move along. Thank you.
So as a corporate lawyer, I've advised both corporate boards and nonprofit boards, including ones I've served on, about how, what our role is to evaluate the CEO, which is what the city manager is. And there should be measurable, objective criteria about the performance of the CEO of the city manager. There was a subcommittee meeting held six months ago or a little more to try to set up those criteria among the city councilors, but it was not successfully concluded. I don't know what its status is. And it is, I think, it is the obligation of the city council to have those criteria, to negotiate those criteria, if necessary, with the city manager, both as part of his or her contract, but also because of our obligations to residents, to make sure that we are in a transparent manner evaluating the manager. And we can learn some lessons about how Cambridge has done it.
And that is time. Thank you so much. Everyone got to go? Yes. Okay. Thank you so much for all your responses. So we are now going to move on to the second topic, which is about housing, and our moderator is Liz.
Thanks, Neela. Hello, excited to be with y'all. I'm Liz. I work at Lowell Alliance. So I've got two questions related to housing. So the first one is, earlier this year, the city council narrowly voted to reject a housing proposal plan that would have increased Lowell's access to state funding for affordable housing. The plan, developed with significant community input, included zoning changes to allow two-family or multifamily housing in single-family zones and accessory dwelling units. How should Lowell approach zoning in relation to affording, uh, housing affordability? And I'm going to remind folks to speak slowly, unlike how I usually speak for interpreters, and we're going to continue to skip, so we'll start with Rita.
That's okay. Thank you very much. I know what you're saying, and I was one that didn't vote for the housing plan for the simple reason that I want to preserve the character of the neighborhoods. I thought it was unfair to, like, build a house on the back of a piece of property that's probably not big enough for that. And I'm sure that the public, if they took it to the voting polls, wouldn't support it either. But I, but I know that we need housing in the city, but I think that we have quite a bit. 230, which is part, 230, which is part of 21816 Pearl Street, there's 37 market rate units. 484 Market Street, 17 units. Mass Mills Phase 4, Suffolk Place, 33 units. Lowell Housing Authority, Merrimack Development, 118 new units. HDIP tax credits were awarded to two projects. Hildreth Building, 50 units at a cost of $2.5.
That is time. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you for the question, Liz. So I vote to support the housing production plan because it took many years. It took over $100,000 to pay consultant those, almost two years. A lot of manpower, a lot of resident and people input. It's just a roadmap. The housing production plan, NIMCOG actually, was the driving behind this housing production. I want to bring that back and to have more discussion on it because I don't think the city staff do a good job in explaining the importance of housing production plan so you know where you're at and where you're going ahead. The zoning change, too, was that's not going to, by approving the housing production plan does not mean that you change the zoning, right? You eliminated the planning and the zoning board in terms of input into how things should be going. So I like to bring that back so that we have some roadmap, some direction to go with housing production plan. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Noon. I'm not an expert on this topic, but I would open it up to be more inclusive. You know, I've heard councilors refer to, you know, "I don't want two-story buildings in Belvedere," and this and that. They really don't want a certain type of person in their neighborhood, NIMBY, you know. Again, I'm not very well-versed on this, but I would open it up to be more inclusive in any way, shape, or form that I could. I would rely on the experts to provide me with these solutions, and I would, I would take full advantage of them. But again, I'm sorry, I'm not an expert on this topic, but thank you.
Thank you. As Chair of the Housing Subcommittee, Councilor Noon and I fight to move forward and approve the ADU because I represent District 7. All of us are immigrant coming from somewhere, and we have a lot of large families. So if ADU pass would allow us to have legal basement for our family, for our children who returns from school, but again, I'm one of the few councilor who voted. The city of Lowell have done a good job in developing more affordable housing, contrary to what have said so far. We have the Acre Crossing, 32 condos. We have Suffolk Place, 33 income restricted condos coming up. And then, 55527, it's recovery home that by CBA. And then, we also have more at 73352 apartment, 733 Broadway Street, 52 apartment that come online.
Hi, my name is Shari Barboza. Meu nome é Shari Barboza. Eu falo português também. Se você quer, eu posso conversar com você assim. The housing production, we're overcrowded in certain areas that have no parking. I was on Central Street. Someone just bought a three-family home, and she can only put up one plaque, and she's like, "Where is everyone else supposed to park?" Parking is an issue. We need to strategically have parking available wherever we're putting in more housing. So we have to have a solid plan, which goes hand in hand with proper transportation. And our transportation system right now does not work, even if it's free. It does not work. People are not using it. The other thing is that I myself have a daughter who's autistic. She's 27. I just took her home from residential, and I need to make an addition to my house, so I am for ADUs because I need to make one in my own home. And I'm part of the community. I've had immigrant family living with me for...
That is time. Thank you. Ever. Thank you.
Hi. So I think the housing production plan is critical to our city. I think rejecting it is a major error in our city council, I think, if we're talking about the character of our neighborhoods. You know, the character of our neighborhoods as they are now is killing our communities. You know, our growing young adults have no place to go. Our elder community is, you know, being displaced because they can't afford the housing costs anymore. So I think it's critical to build more homes so we can reduce the property tax burden on each family member, so we can have more space for more people, so we can grow our tax base, so we can have space for small businesses, so our city can be better. And I definitely also understand the concern with more people, more cars, which is why a big emphasis of my campaign is better public transportation so we can have space for more people, so our city can grow and really, you know, unlock the Lowell, the potential that Lowell has. I think passing the housing production plan is, is critical. So I would like to bring that back to the table, too, if I was a city councilor. Thank you.
Thank you. So the housing production plan was something that I supported. It was something that I worked on. I was part of the steering committee that was put together. I was the representative from the council. I also represent the city of Lowell and this council on NIMCOG, the board that was mentioned earlier, which is the Northern Middlesex Council of Governments. So that's basically Lowell and the surrounding towns. NIMCOG helps all the communities with planning, with creating things like a housing production plan, which the other communities have all adopted. But I do think it's important to take a step back and look at our neighborhoods. We've heard preserving the character of the neighborhoods. Something like 70% of our existing housing stock does not conform with our zoning code on the books. So what exactly are we preserving? I think we should have a zoning code that reflects what we've actually built and allows more to be built in a similar way that fits in. This topic could really take 10, 15 minutes, so I'm going to stop now.
That is time. Thank you.
So both Lowell, the housing production plan and the Lowell Forward Plan as a whole involved input from a large number of people in the city and reflected the goals of many residents. And those goals need to be balanced. We need to obviously grow housing. We have a need for both market rate and affordable housing, but we also have a city that is diverse in neighborhood feel. And the housing production plan did not require major changes. It allowed for an evolution in how our neighborhoods would evolve. And ADUs are actually now a state law requirement or change, so not really part of this discussion. These issues really are ones that need to be dug into more deeply in discussion at city council and outside city council, and not just be, have either a one-minute answer here or at city council.
Off again. Thank you. Well, sitting here, I guess, you know, I listened to all eight of them, and you can actually can feel how I feel right now. It's congested. It should be called the Acre, what's the Acre Housing Production Plan, right? I mean, listen to all the answers, all happening in the acre. We need to breathe. There's the green space. Where's the area for our kids? You know, what are some places that should be housed at? So I'm really, really, you know, in a way, angry. There's a lot of stuff that's happening, but we call for housing plan. Let's look at the acre, you know? So this is something that we need to really discuss and look at how we're going to move forward in the future. The characteristic of the city, I mean, well, depend on who looks at it, right? Okay. Well, I mean, I'm really, I have kids there, and I want my grandkids to grow up there and stuff like that. And we don't have a little, our park is getting smaller. Our street is really, really getting smaller as well.
That is time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. So when I think about the housing production plan, one of the interesting things that the, one of the best things that the housing production plan said was that we had a lack, there was a lack of ownership opportunity and a lack of amenity in our densest neighborhoods, to echo what Sydney just said, it's the Acre, downtown, back central, Centerville. When I think about preserving the character of a neighborhood, I think about the Apple Orchard Development in Centerville and how that absolutely did not preserve the character of the neighborhood. It's not about how many people live in a building. It's about what that building comes at the cost of, and that when we're building housing and we need to build more housing, that we are effectively using zoning requirements, like adding green space requirements onto new developments, especially in our densest neighborhoods, to make sure that we're not just building a place to sleep, but that we're building a neighborhood and a community that you can live in and raise a family in play basketball time.
Great. Thank you all. And I have one more question related to housing. Just going to change. What steps would you take to address challenges faced by unhoused individuals in Lowell? And we're going to continue to skip one, so Ozzy's going to start.
I don't know if I have any ideas on this one. So basically, what we've been doing with Rights Tenants Group, and that's advocating So, basically what we've been doing with Rights Tenants Group and that's advocating for better conditions, better programming. I mean, it's pretty simple. Just treat us right and we'll act better. I mean, it's, it's not that much more difficult than that. I mean, we just need better than people, again, it won't spill out onto the street. As far as, as far as all this, the new, like VINFEN, that program and things like that, it's still putting somebody in a locked facility, okay? We need independence to get better. You do not necessarily get better in that type of setting. You need, you need your own space to get better. At least I did. I'll just put it that way. A little unprepared, but thank you very much for listening.
The unhoused population has various special needs. Some mental health, some drug abused and, and some from broken homes and stuff like that. So, I would prefer to look at a solution to provide some transitional housing with wraparound services. That's what CBA at 555 Merrimack Street have done. And that's what CTI does on Summer Street, providing a transitional home for someone who's just transitioned from, from being unhoused to be responsible, living on their, their own in their apartment. And these are the investment that the city and the council looked at it together. Remember that unhoused population in Lowell are not all from Lowell. 50% of them are from somewhere else. And we were told that the reason they come here because Lowell has the transitional housing here while other cities in town around do not. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. My name is Sheri Barbosa. The key, the key step that we need is rapid rehousing. Once someone ends up on the street, multiple things can happen and we really need to try to house people immediately. We also need social services, not just police, you know, picking people up. We need social services that actually follow an individual, not just address the needs right here, right now, give them food. And, and we need to have long-term planning for all of this to actually happen and not just talk about it a million times at a city council meeting. Thank you.
This is a, it's a pretty big question. I mean, I would first want to spend my time sort of rejecting what the city council has been doing over the last couple of years when talking about our relationship with our, you know, our homeless community members. I mean, these are, these are our community members, not an invasive species of people trying to take down our city. They are struggling and they need help. They don't need cops chasing them from park to park. They, you know, as Sheri said, housing first. You need to rapidly rehouse our unhoused community members so we can get them on the right track. We need to improve our addiction services, not jump on the gun and start banning every possible solution that can help our homeless community members that are facing addiction and they do at a higher rate. They just have to be treated with dignity. They're, they're humans who are struggling. You know, they're not doing this on purpose, I think. So, if we can keep that in mind and allow that to lead our, you know, policymaking decisions, I think that's critical. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for the question. Once again, I think this is one that we could spend a lot longer than a minute talking about. One of the biggest challenges is the, the lack of available affordable housing in our community and in communities around. Because it's one thing to get someone in a shelter bed to get them off the street, but if you don't have that next step that they can take, that shelter bed doesn't become available for the next person who needs it. And that's something that we see time and time again as a challenge when we have discussions with the, with the city's health director. We need to look at implementing more day services in Lowell. Right now, the folks who are tenants of the shelter, they're there overnight and then in the morning they're forced to leave the shelter. They have nowhere to go. Something like the Father Bill's model in Quincy, which I won't go into, but something to look in, look into, to give folks an opportunity somewhere to be, somewhere to actually, you know, whether it's accessing services or even just doing their laundry, you know, simple things like that to give people an opportunity to, to grow. And then we just need more permanent supportive housing everywhere.
Time. Thank you.
So, the challenge of homelessness is an issue I've been researching for the last five years. It's complex and it's not unique to Lowell. There is a lot we can learn from experts nationwide and I've gone to a number of conferences, but I'm also learning from our service providers on the ground and meeting with them, Elliott Church, to understand what is specific to Lowell. And one thing I've learned is that, you know, obviously there is an intersection but not a complete overlap between homelessness and mental health and substance use disorders. The drugs that are on the street now are much more powerful than have been seen, you know, 20 years ago. So, the solutions are likely going to have to differ. And we're going to need to collaborate and communicate, you know, openly and honestly about how we're going to triage the various folks who are involved and, and what the costs are gonna be and how we're going to move forward. But so far, we have just been shouting at each other about this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. I have a 24-year-old nephew. He's an addict and he's unhoused, but he does have a house. So, we're not trying to treat symptom but not the disease. And we've been doing that. This is one of the reasons why I need a sustainable clinician, mental health clinician, right in the city hall. It shouldn't be one year. It shouldn't be two years. It should be right there all the time. So, community housing the same way. But I don't want the council to ban community housing, just like the harm reduction site. So, we need something that's sustainable, you know, for our future children as well. This is hitting home. And it's not just numbers. This is a family, community member, friends. So, we need to really look into this and build a sustainable site, you know, for them so they can go to and they can call. When you don't have a clinician on site, it's very, very difficult for to, you know, you can't get a cop. You can't get a police officer to go get them. It's not good.
I think one of the, the first things that we need to do to address some problems both at the shelter and in our affordable housing is to make sure that the city's inspectional services is paying as much attention to the conditions in Section, Section 8 housing and also at the shelter. Because when you have, when, when you're affordable housing, when it's a four-year waitlist to get into affordable housing, or if you're, if you have a bed or a room at Lowell Transitional Living Center or anywhere else in the city of Lowell, you deserve to have a living space that's free of mice and bedbugs and mold and have breathable air and have a bathroom window that you can obscure so that people don't see you showering from, from South Common. So, yeah, no, that's, that's the first thing that I would suggest. That's the first thing that I would demand. And that is what almost everybody that I've talked to, living, okay, I'm at time.
I will just say that, as someone else said, this is a very complex issue. Anybody on this panel that thinks that they're gonna eliminate, and they have, someone has said that, they will become a city councillor and eliminate homelessness. No, you won't. Don't lie. Homelessness is a very issue where there are people that no matter what you do for them, they don't admit that they have a problem. They have no problem. You cannot put them into a housing. They don't want to go. There are many types of homeless people. There's the working poor. They need housing. There's mentally ill. Do you want them living next door to your grandmother? I don't. I want them to be supervised and given their medication so they can be functioning individuals. There's many things to talk about on this. I, I am on the president of the board of the front, of the veterans and we...
That is time. Thank you.
Thank you for the question. Homelessness or unhoused individual is a very complex issue. There's many reasons, some of my colleague stated or some of the panel stated. It's involve a lot of things. Affordable housing is one of them. You have individuals and families who have, cannot afford housing. And the cities and the state has allocated a lot of money. We as a city, from just CPA alone, Community Preservation Act alone, spent 2.2 million dollars to create over 200 affordable housing unit for families and individual. These issues of affordable housing or house homeless populations is one that take all of us, Lowell is not unique. Take all of us working together, pointing finger at each other is not gonna solve the issue.
That is time. Thank you. All right. Fantastic. Thanks, y'all. We're gonna turn it over to the lightning round and Neela's gonna ask some quick yes or no questions.
Hello, everyone. So, just a reminder, you know what? You guys look like you're ready already. Okay. So, just a reminder, yes, no. And I'm, yeah. All right. Here we go. Are you ready? So, first question, should all council votes and meeting documents be published online within 48 hours? Second question, would you support requiring city council agendas and minutes to be available in multiple languages? Beautiful. Question three, would you support Lowell providing live translation on request for city council and school committee meetings? Fourth question, should councillors be required to hold at least one public listening session per year in their district? Number five, do you support zone, sorry, do you support zoning reforms to allow accessory dwelling units, ADUs, in more neighborhoods? Number six, should Lowell expand inclusionary zoning to require affordable units in new large developments? Should Lowell... That's completely fine. I lost my spot. I'm so sorry. Thank you. So, eight, would you support creating a city managed affordable housing trust fund? Did I? It's okay. No, no, no. You're good. Okay. We're going backtracking. Okay. Should Lowell expand inclusionary zoning to require wheelchair accessible units in, in new large developments? Number nine, should Lowell pursue more partnerships with nonprofits to create transitional housing? Number 10, do you support expanding bus shelters and benches across the city? Do you believe police-led clearances of encampments are both ethical and an effective strategy for public health and safety? Do you believe planning for climate change and sustainability should be a consideration in all development for plans of Lowell? Should Lowell create policies to encourage commercial landlords to make properties more accessible to those with disabilities? Should Lowell commit to fixing potholes within 30 days of a service request? Do you support increasing, do you support increasing staffing for trash pickup and park maintenance before approving new developments? We gotta slow it down just a little bit for interpretation. My bad. Okay. 16, should the city prioritize tree planting and green space investments in all neighborhoods? Do you support participatory budgeting which allows residents to vote directly on specific city projects? Beautiful. Okay. Should Lowell build, should Lowell build more protected bike lanes downtown? And I believe that is the end of our first lightning round. Thank you so much. And I'm going... So, we're going on to our third topic and I'm going to introduce Monica.
Hello, I'm Monica. I am a parent here in Lowell. I have a seventh grader who's been in the Lowell schools in, and she's a special education student. So, I'm gonna be asking three questions that you each have a minute for on education. The first one, how can the city council foster a positive working relationship with the school committee to strengthen education in the city as a whole? And we're starting with Marcos.
Well, I think there's a clear example of how we can begin, you know, amending this relationship and improving it is by listening to the school committee when it asks for, you know, a certain amount of money. I think when, you know, the superintendent Liam Skinner is saying you need this amount of money for our school to operate, I think our city should be doing everything in our power to make sure that that funding comes through. Education is critical. It's how you create outstanding citizens. It's how you set up our city for a brighter future. So, I think, you know, when a school committee, when the superintendent is saying we need a certain budget, I think our city should be prioritizing that as much as possible, even when, you know, money is down a little bit.
Thank you for the question. When this came up, or when the budget scenario came up a few months ago, I was very vocal with the fact that I believe that this kind of collaboration begins at the top. The city manager and the superintendent of schools should be working hand in hand, not just developing budgets, but especially developing budgets. But it also extends down to things that some of my other colleagues have proposed, such as a joint facilities department between the schools and the city. There are opportunities here to work together. And I also think it's important to note that the mayor that we choose as part of the city council currently does serve as chair of the school committee. So, I think it's important that we select a mayor who's interested in working with the school committee and not against them. I'm not saying anything about our current mayor or mayors in the past, but that's a consideration for me when I decide whom I'm voting for for mayor. Thank you.
I think having a strong relationship between city councillors and school committee members, between the administration on each side is key. You know, frankly, I don't watch as many school committee meetings as I should as a city council candidate or as a resident in Lowell. And I think it's important to understand what's going on at the school committee. I think it's important for all the city councillors to do that. And it's something that I realized and need to take on myself to, to understand better what's going on at the school system. But it's really, comes down to, you know, we talk about a positive working relationship. It is having relationships between the folks on both sides and not view it as adversarial. We are all in this together trying to get good education for all our kids from age three to forever because we're all going to need to keep learning. So, having that relationship and then building on it through communication and collaboration is key.
I think, originally, I didn't really understand that, you know, because I know that school committee members going around the city and trying to get votes and stuff like that, and so do we. But at the same time, you know, it's, it's, it's almost like every time there's a budget coming up, the school committee seemed to be secondary. And I think I agree with Wayne that the city manager and also the superintendent should be working hand in hand, you know, because they are, we are carving the next generation. And so therefore, we should be building this partnership because the parents are also really connected to the school committee. I am pretty close and I know I will be, continue to be close with the school committee members, whether, you know, under whatever capacity, but that's the way to go so that we can improve our community and especially our kids, you know, the Acre kid, also the Lowell Highland kid as well throughout the city. And it's very important for the parents as well to be connected with the city council as well with the school committee members so that they in turn ask for more involvement in it.
If only we knew a candidate who was also a teacher at Lowell High School. So, I, I am a special education teacher at Lowell High School in, in what we call the LEAP program. So, that is just a bit of personal background that I think should center how I feel about education. I also have a one-year-old who's gonna need to go to a school somewhere someday. As far as immediate steps, I, I think when the talk around the school budget was going, there was a lot of discussion about memorandum of understanding and maintenance of effort. And I don't really think anyone knew what any of those things meant publicly, right? You'd read it in the paper. I knew what it meant, but whatever. I think making sure, so maintenance of effort is when the city... I think making sure, so maintenance of effort is when the city comes in to fix a leaky pipe, they bill, they don't, the school department doesn't have to pay for it because the city plumber does it, and then that comes out. The last time that that agreement was done was 2011. I think setting up a schedule of regular review, just like we do every other contract that the school department ends in, is one way to increase transparency. And, thanks.
Thank you very much. When, I do believe very strongly that the school department is not an island of itself, it's a department, and it's part of the city, and we should have great collaboration between the manager and Liam Skinner. I also want to say that children go into school confunction properly if the roof is leaking and there's water puddles there and there's barrels collecting the rain. Also, if the boilers aren't working and it's cold, this is a detriment. So McCalliv School, new roof, Robinson School, new roof, boilers, exterior windows, McAvenue School, new boiler, Wang School, new roof, new boilers, Bartlett, new boilers. This all took place since fiscal year 21 right up until today. Shaughnessy School, new roofs, new boilers, Pawtucket, new chiller installation, Cavalo Turf Field was redone. There's so many things going on in the schools to benefit the children, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question, and thank you Rita for listening all those work and renovations that the cities and the school do to their good relation between manager Golden and superintendent Skinner's, we have to foster and build up on that relation. There's nobody sitting in this room or outside listening doesn't believe that education is a cornerstone to a good citizen, a better life, and my family is an example of that. So I think too is that the relationship between the school committees and the council could be better. We now, in the past, relied on our mayor as our representative or chair of the school committee to send our, you know, message or feeling, you know. Going forward, we ourselves should also be involved, myself included, in that process as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So again, not my expertise, but so, okay, we can strengthen the relationship by funding the schools properly, it's pretty simple, I think people would be happy with that. Excuse me if I have the details incorrect, I believe it's pretty close, but over the past 10 years or so, I believe they've cut about $24 million from the school, if I'm correct. So I don't see what some members of the council have said matching up with what's actually happening. I would fully be on board to restore that 24 million and put however much on top of that to ensure that our schools are competitive with the schools around the area. When I see athletes, you know, go to prep schools because, you know, the services aren't good, that, I don't know, it rubs me the wrong way. So, and it's not just athletes, it's, you know, anybody who wants a quality education tends to leave, and I don't want that, so thank you.
We came from a culture where we value the education so much, and that's what I bring to, with me on the council floor. We trust the manager and the school superintendent to work out the budget together, but what lacking that I would love to see is that the city council and the school committee jointly meet and go over the budget together, because right now, we have not done, we just hear through the city manager and the school department and the school committee would hear from the superintendent, each one have their own version. So I pressed the solicitor, pressed our CFO, and he said the net school funding is more than what need, than compared to other cities in town. And I would love to work to increase the chapter 70 funding to the level that I had right now 104, but I'd like to increase, as Sean was saying, and then contract...
That's time.
Hi, my name is Sharri Barbosa. I have five children, two stepchildren, two have autism, and we've been in the Lowell Public Schools since like 2004, when we bought a house over on B Street. So we're talking about the relationship with the school committee to strengthen education and the city as a whole with the city council. So the city council, the city is responsible for our buildings. Our therapeutic schools, sorry for translation, but I have a lot to say. Our therapeutic school buildings are in shambles, I just took pictures the other day, the roofs are falling apart, the shingles are falling off, windows are boarded up. Our children, our special ed children are in these schools, our children that receive money from the state are in these schools. We can follow that money, and the schools are falling apart. Their playgrounds are almost non-existent, these are all areas that the city council can help with, and we need to elect our mayor, because our city, as they've said, the mayor sits on both. We need to repair them, the elevator at the Bartlett hasn't been functioning for I don't know how long, and we need equity throughout the city for schools, thank you.
Please pass it on. Sorry, I forgot where we started. All right, so the next question. The current federal administration has made a priority of dismantling longstanding educational protections for immigrant, transgender, and disabled students. They have threatened public schools that value diversity, anti-racism, and equity, values that Lowell Public Schools have repeatedly affirmed. What should the city council's role be in protecting the rights of our students? And we're going to be starting with Belinda.
So my husband and I chose to live in Lowell because we love Lowell's diversity and vitality. And we, that is fundamental to who we are as a city, it is part of our culture, and it is a culture that we have to keep reaffirming daily in the city. The city council clearly through messages to the city administration, messages to the community can reaffirm this, and our protection of everybody in the city. We will clearly need to ensure that, you know, our police force, you know, doesn't interact closely with ICE except for true criminal situations. But, you know, beyond that, I'm not sure exactly what kind of specific ideas there are to, you know, on the ground to protect folks. And actually, this is why a minute is not enough.
You know, loving kindness is not just a simple phrase. Also, racism with public health crisis is not something you put on walls. You saw our campaign, we have our pride plaque right on it, we're the only campaign who have our pride plaque on our sign everywhere, so I don't have to say a lot. You know, I've been taught that way, and I've shown that way, we're not saying it, we're doing it right now. So, right Nancy? So yes, we are doing it, and, you know, we're supporting, and this is through my learning, through my experience from 25 years working as a healthcare provider. We treat everybody, you know, we protect everybody. So again, I don't have to say it, we're already doing it, thank you.
Hi, Sean McDonough. I think to start with, and it's only a minute, so it's probably all I'll get to say, I am deeply upset, I don't know how to say it nicely, about ICE presence, especially close to Lowell High School. So I have students coming in to my class, I have students going into my wife's class, there are kids in the hallways and kids on the tennis team, and who are walking down streets, like on Bridge Street, by the CVS, just past the CVS that has had ICE at it seemingly multiple days a week for months now. And so we have kids coming in, and they're literally, they're crying, they're upset, they have to change how they're going to walk home, they're nervous about their parents. And we also don't have an effective way for those kids to get home because our kids are reliant on the LRTA. So I'm at 10 seconds, but what can the city council do? Great question, but it's wrong, so, yeah, sorry.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that this city council was very instrumental in creating DEI, and we, and the city manager appointed Bell Dominguez, she's our DEI officer, diversity, equity, and inclusion. She does a tremendous job, and I'm sure if anybody had a problem with a discriminated issue or whatever, to contact her, she would be on it like white on rice, it's unbelievable. Also, as far as disability students, we have a disability commission, and they receive money from the violations that occur with people parking in handicapped parking spots and they're not eligible to do that. They get about $20,000 each year, and they put that money to create playgrounds that are for disabled children. So to say there's none in the city of Lowell are, maybe there shouldn't be more, but there's quite a few.
That's time.
Sorry.
So the question, what should the city council's role be in protecting the right of our student and resident? I believe that the school administration has a policy not allowing ICE in the building. The police department also have a policy not to assist or working with ICE on immigration issue, but still, ICE still come to the street of Lowell, come like a gangster. As a former victim witness advocate with the district attorney office, and as a board member and hearing examiner of the Sex Offender Registry Board, I support everything we can do on public safety. But what we have seen from ICE and from the administration, the Trump administration, is not about public safety. It's about political theater, it's about political power, it's about an attempt to intimidate our immigrant community. I would not support that.
Thank you, everybody, Ozo. So what I would do is stand up to the bully. I mean, we all know this administration's antics are completely out of control. I haven't really seen anybody really being outspoken on the council in particular. Honestly, I don't blame them per se, because you don't kind of want to attract this person's ire, I suppose. But I'll tell you what doesn't protect our kids or anybody else in the city. I've heard from somebody on that DEI subcommittee, and she said they never met, not once, and the subcommittee has been eliminated. So I would vote, or I would bring up for a vote to restore that subcommittee and make it an actionable committee with all different types of initiatives and whatnot. I mean, eliminating that program does not state that you stand for those ideals, so that's what I would do. Thank you.
Thank you for the questions. The federal government has the power over cities and towns, even the state, and Trump threatened to send a troop to Washington and Portland and all of that. So for us as a counselor, what we can do, we can ensure that our transgender students and individuals are right. And for me as a counselor, I'm not just putting it on my campaign sign, but I practice it, I participate and welcome the pride parade and the flag raising at the city hall, also welcome and talk to students who identify themselves as transgender students and say that we are proud of you, you know, that's what my daughters say, you know, don't hate, appreciate. So that's what the motto I'm also practicing. Also, we want to ensure that the student multicultural education is honored in our city and in our public school.
Hi, again, this is like way longer than a minute. So we're talking about protections for immigrants, transgender, and disabled students, so let's just focus on that, because this is a huge question. So our playgrounds are not all equal. My son currently attends the Maury School, and the playground is much of nothing, and they just spent $1,000 to re-hot top it, and it's not accessible, and they have handicapped students. $5,000 of the disability commission's money, of the supposed $20,000, goes towards interpretation, so ASL, so 5,000 just right off that budget is gone, so that's what that goes towards. I don't want to bring up anyone's name, but at the last city council meeting, we just talked about a slide costing like $8,000, so I don't know how we could do that all. I'm about inclusion for all, I don't care who you are, what you are, what color, what gender, we have inclusive bathrooms for all, and, which would include handicap, unisex bathrooms...
That's time.
And it's a done deal.
Hi, yeah, it's a little loaded question, but I think there's a lot our city can do. I think for one, our city can be expanding the team we have trying to push back against any efforts to attack any of our, you know, minoritized communities. Look, our police department for the last couple of years has over 20 vacant positions. I think we should actually, you know, put those to areas like maybe more lawyers to fight against any incursion on our rights on any of our community members. And I think as we talked about ICE in our city, I think, you know, as the son of two immigrant parents, you know, I've, you know, I know families, I know friends, I know people who have, you know, been abducted by ICE, who have been held, and I think our city needs to be doing a lot more to really fight back against this, I think. If someone is literally coming to kidnap your family members, our police officers should be able to intervene and mediate the situation, you know, that's, you know, that's the sort of response we need, because that's the sort of crisis our city is facing. But yeah.
Thank you, I agree that this is not a minute answer, but I'll do what I can. So I think it's important to note that the city council can adopt policies for the city administration in how we work with organizations. As Councilor Newt mentioned, the school district has a policy on the books about inclusiveness and what they will and won't do. The city has a policy on the books about Lowell Police and whether or not they work with various agencies, and I'm proud that they don't, specifically ICE for immigration enforcement, that is not an appropriate use of Lowell Police resources, so I'm glad we've done that. But I want to know, I want residents to know that Lowell Police can support you in these situations. We had a situation in my building, where I live, the condo building I live, where ICE came in and was knocking on doors. When that came up in this very room at a downtown neighborhood association meeting, Captain Maris, who is here, said, "Call us next time."
I'm sorry, but that's time.
That is private property, if they need to be removed, the LPD will do that. So keep in mind, that's an ally for this whole community.
For our third question on education, as we have seen with, most recently with the mold problems at the Pawtucketville, school building safety and maintenance is a recurring issue in Lowell. Many constituents feel that the city has not been sufficiently responsive to complaints. What steps would you take to restore trust that our city's school buildings are habitable and that maintenance issues will be addressed in a timely manner? And we're going to be starting with Sean.
Well, as somebody that was very recently teaching in the basement of the 1922 building at Lowell High School, yeah, one of the things that we need to do is that we need to acknowledge the problem, we're getting there. Councilor Mers here acknowledged the problem earlier. We have roofs that are leaking, we have boilers that are broken, we have mold and weird pipes with potentially asbestos stuff wrapped around them. We also need, for an immediate next step, 311 has been great for the city. I would love to see something specifically targeting the schools, so for school staff and for parents and for high school age kids who can use a smartphone, the 311 system is great, but something really streamlined and dedicated that looks just at the school building. Because we have kids that run around and will take a picture of a problem, right? We have parents that hear about the problem, we have staff that hear about the problem, and streamlining that reporting like we've done for potholes, I think would be a great step in finding them quickly. Time.
Thank you very much. This is, I can sense your frustration, and I know we're right on the same page with this one. The parents and teachers at the Pawtucketville Memorial School some years ago asked the council to come and listen to the neighborhood and the parents whose children go to the Pawtucketville Memorial School with the mold and the... It was like, we on the council are only as good as the people that we have the manager direct to do the job. And if they can't do it, or they don't do it properly, it reflects on us, as you can see. You're very upset with the council when we do our best to get things done, and it just takes so long, like it's never going to happen. And I'm going right here.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions. We do, I do share the frustrations of teachers and parents in Potucket School, and as well as any other school that have, you know, room or mold or repair need to be done. I know that we've done a lot with these administrations, and I know also that there's more need to be done. I also believe too is that, you know, learning will not take place when teachers, students don't feel safe in their vibe that they add. So working together with the school committee going forward, we need to address all those and all those. I know the administration has been an ongoing apply for more funding from the state, from the school in terms of MSBA funding to repair roof, heating, and so on and so forth. So thank you.
So my answer would be, it would sort of go back to the school committee and city council relationships. And that's restoring the funding that they've taken away over time. You know, as soon as that state funding kicked in, the city council, they took the opportunity to cut funding along with it. So we need to bring that up to par and not only restore, but increase that funding. Money makes things happen. We all know this in our own lives and institutionally. So that's it. Thank you.
Councilor Mercier mentioned all the effort that the city have done to improve the infrastructure of the school department, along with mechanicals and all of that. And the thing is that it takes money to do all of that. So jointly with the, with the school committee and the school department, the city worked together and creating a building maintenance, joint building maintenance group together. So this way, we can resolve the problem clearly and quickly. So I also think that's, you know, moving forward, we also need to allow parents and allow teachers to have access to reporting some issue at the school, because oftentimes the teacher would say, "I'm afraid to speak up because I don't want to be retaliated." So we need to find a way for safe reporting by the teacher and the parent of problem in school when they see it. Thank you.
So in regards to the, the school building safety and maintenance, I'm just going to focus on that once again. So I think you've already heard, the Bartlett School elevator, I don't believe it's fixed. That means that five classrooms were moved around, and their open house was pushed off. And the ADA compliance across the city, not just in our schools, is lacking. So how we take care of our special needs, how we take care of our elderly, how we take care of our students, is a reflection of how we take care of our people. Can we ask UMass Lowell to help, you know, maybe have some of our classrooms in their brand new, beautiful buildings? While we have dilapidated schools, we have Middlesex Community College, we have UMass Lowell, they're taking over half the city, and yet our schools are, you know, are dilapidated. I took pictures. They're awful. We have some beautiful ones, but, you know, it's sparsely around. We used our money to put up playgrounds in neighborhoods I would think didn't really need that million dollars. We want to be a five-year destination.
That's time, please.
I know, it's hard. Now you know how we feel when we speak at city council.
You got three minutes. Not always.
I think, like Ozo said, I think, and some others have reiterated throughout, I think we just need to be properly funding our schools. I think, let's look at the high school, for example. I think if you're not funding repairs enough sufficiently over the years, like, you know, lo and behold, you'll have hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of repairs to do, including surprise repairs. So I think we need to be getting on top of these problems and making sure we're also funding our schools so that we can do repairs. And also, as Vesta said, I think also, there's a lot of problems, and I think we should be pushing our state reps to, you know, work with the appropriate, you know, forces and organizations, so our city can get the proper amount of money that it requires, because our schools have a lot of needs. Yeah.
Thank you. So this is a multifaceted question, like many of them tonight. But I see, I see several avenues by which we could continue to work to improve. And as everything that was mentioned by Councilor Mercier, there has been a lot of work done over the past few years in the schools. But it's clear we still need more. Many of those repairs were funded by the Mass State or the Massachusetts School Building Authority programs. And I think we need to be going after every possible dollar from those programs as we can, in order to empower us to be able to fix more things. The joint facilities department that I mentioned earlier, I think would go a long way to help streamline this and understand what's needed and get things resolved quicker. And I think there should be a standing joint subcommittee of the city council and the school committee to meet and talk about these things, whether it's quarterly, monthly, just to understand where everything is, to build that trust and transparency we were talking about. And I'm going to stop before I get yelled at.
So the role of the city council is not to micromanage, but to set policies and require the administration to come up with plans and prioritizations. And that's not just for maintenance of the schools, but it's really for maintenance of all of our infrastructure. And once, and to communicate that to, you know, city council, to residents, so that we can wear appropriate way in and help guide those prioritizations in the future. It will also require investment from state or local funding, which we have to be aware of. But I think it's important that we communicate and really understand where we're heading as a city, both on maintaining our buildings, but also maintaining our infrastructure more generally.
To be the last one answering a question, sounds like we're talking like school in Cambodia or something like that. It's a, I think we need all the support we can get, and also communication between parents and also the teachers, especially with students when they walk to and from school. They should be able to communicate about safety to the teachers as well. And also, I encourage the city council and also school committee to look into the Safe Route to School program. It's a program where they help improve the school's infrastructure as well, is that where you get up to $400,000 to fix school. I used to work for Mass Emotion Project, where I looking into a lot of schools, bike rack, bike lanes, Safe Route to School programs, including a lot of issues that protecting kid to and from school and parent as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm now going to turn it back over to Nyla for a few more lightning round questions.
Hi, again, my name is Nyla. Third time seeing you. So just a reminder to my candidates that not everyone in the back can see when you raise it up, so just making sure we get it nice and high, so everyone in the back can see your answers would be great. Shorter amount of questions this time, and I'm going to take it nice and slow, to be nice to our interpreters. So question number one is, should the city council commit to fully funding school buildings' maintenance in the annual capital plan? Nice and high, nice and high, nice and high. Guys, straight to elbow, like we're in school, we got to keep our hands nice and high if we want to get an answer. Number two, should the city council prioritize energy efficiency upgrades in school buildings as part of climate goals? Number three, do you believe that Lowell should commit to a minimum level funding public schools each year? Nice and high, I will remind you each time. Number four, would you support requiring the relevant departments to provide an annual itemized list of the city's maintenance of effort contributions to Lowell public schools, including detailed cost breakdowns to the school committee and the public? I appreciate those nice high arms. Number five, would you support incentives for city employees, including teachers, to live in Lowell, such as housing assisting programs? And for our last question, do you believe that one of the responsibilities of a city counselor is to advocate to the state legislator for full funding for charter reimbursement? Thank you so much.
We took it easy on you with that question. Could have gone harder. But anyway, so thank you all so much. I could sense a little frustration that one minute wasn't enough, but we just scratched the surface of a lot of important questions and issues, and we had a lot of you RSVP to this, which is amazing, right? So we really appreciate that you all kept it on track for us.
So I am here just to thank everybody again. So just to name the different organizations that helped plan this, along with Lowell Education Justice Alliance, which I'm a part of, is Fortaleza, which is another education-based group for Latino students and families, the Latinx Center for Community Empowerment, Lowell Alliance. Thank you to Lowell Telemedia Center for doing such a great job helping us with this. We also had Lowell Votes, Massachusetts Education Justice Alliance, there are alliances throughout the state, and then the Merrimack Valley Project. So I also wanted to acknowledge our planning committee. I was going to point you out, but I can't because there's so many. Oh, shoot. Hi. Did you all want to do a closing statement? Really? I almost let you off the hook on that one, but I know you have a lot of things going on in your head going, "Why isn't she asking me?" Okay, so anyway, let's back up. I've already taken care of part of the closing, so we're good. And I think we're going to go the opposite direction, all right? So again, one minute, your closing thoughts for this event.
Thank you. My name again is Parvati Ayam. It was my honor to be, it is my honor to be serving the city and particularly the AIC as a vice mayor and the city council for the last four years. I want to thank the organizer and everyone listening tonight. Over the past four years, we made a real progress together in Lowell. We created new affordable housing, repaved some street sidewalks, upgrading our parks, including North Common and Clemente Park in Cambodia Town, improved infrastructure across this neighborhood. We support small businesses, brought the economic development, promote stability, and clean energy, invested in education, quality of life for families and senior and veteran. So I'm proudly, and my wife and I, my family and I, humbly ask for your vote November 4th to continue this progress together for a more vibrant, inclusive Lowell.
Ozo. So I didn't have anything prepared here, but a lot of what I stand for is, I guess, poverty alleviation initiatives, trying to tackle the income disparities that are so prevalent in our city through any means possible, you know, through, and different things like arts, sports, things like this, to where we're not, I mean, we have a rich community here, but it's not being tapped into properly. And it's not like, these, I guess, these segments and a lot of other segments of our community are not being mobilized properly. There are people's abilities just being wasted, and that's no more obvious than on the streets of Lowell. Each and every day, I speak with people, these are my friends, I speak with people who are brilliant. We need to help people, help themselves, so that it can help everybody else and, you know, turn people into the upstanding citizens that they are inside, that I am now, that I've become. So thank you.
Thank you. Please give all the organizers a round of applause. And thank you again to LTC for hosting this. My name is Vesta Noon, and I'm running for reelection to the At-Large City Council. This is going to be my fifth term. There's a lot of challenge, of course, the city has to continue to work on going forward. Affordable housing, we are talking about it. We are doing, we're building more housing unit, affordable housing unit, but more need to be done, working with the state, city, and state and our partner. Public safety and the infrastructure, we've done a lot, but going forward, it's going to be tough with the budget and all that. Education, homeless issues, and cities that staff with all departments reflective of the people that we serve. Going forward, that's what I'm going to do. I'm asking for one of your three vote come November 4th. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. I'm Rita Mercier, and I just want to say that I work for the Middlesex Sheriff's Office. I've been working there for 21 years. I am also the president of the Friends of the Council on Aging. We fund different amenities, like a washing machine, a dryer, a stove, anything that they need that the budget can't afford, we buy it. Yes, we do. We bought a bus, and the bus is picking up people, bringing them to the senior center. I belong to the Bridge Club of Greater Lowell. We just recently bought a house at 147, a building at 147 East Merrimack Street. We're going to house 15 homeless veterans there. We're in the process of buying another facility, the Air House on Potucket Street, for 26 veterans. So that'll be 41 veterans that are homeless that'll have a place to stay. On November 4th, please consider me. You have the power to, oh, man.
The world may never know. Thank you. Thank you to Councilor Noon for giving me the opportunity to stand up and stretch my legs. So my name is Sean McDonough. I live on Market Street with my wife and one-year-old son. I am a special education teacher at Lowell High School. I only have a minute, I have to speak fast. My wife also teaches at the high school. Because I'm a teacher at Lowell High School, it's important to say that I would save $25,000 if I'm elected, because you can't get paid twice. That's honestly a really big point here. I'm a fairly normal person with, I think, good politics. I think ICE is bad, I just want to say that one more time. And I would like to be an active voice for our neighborhood for making sure that we have the same access to green space and public amenity that we have in other neighborhoods, that we have parking that makes sense. And I have 10 seconds. Rita said it earlier, so I'm going to say it again. I'm also proud to be endorsed by the Merrimack Valley Central Labor Council. Please vote for Sean McDonough, for District 4. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm new here, so I'm going to run through this really quickly. So first of all, I'm basically born four months into politics, so let me get into the politics first, though. My name is Sidney Leing, I'm running for District 7. Please vote for me November 4th. I'm going to be running for District 7. I'm not running for mayor, I'm not running for vice mayor. I'm going to be your waist, your arms, your legs, I will take care of you. So please vote for me November 4th, Tuesday. Thank you.
So thank you, everybody. I'm Belinda Duran, running for city council in District 3. Soundbites don't solve problems, but collaboration and communication do. So let's talk. Reach out to me through my website, belinda4bellvedear.com. And what you'll find is that I'm prepared. I know Lowell. I'm professional. I show up and do the work. I showed up here, as did all of my colleagues. I am positive. I love Lowell, and I know we are a wonderful city. So I'd love to learn from all of you. I listen, I learn, and as I said, I show up and I listen, I learn, and as I said, I show up and do the work, and I want to learn from you. Thank you.
I too would like to thank Councilor Noon for giving us all the opportunity to stand up and stretch. I'd also like to thank the organizers and LTC for putting this event together. Thank you to the audience, whether you're here in the room with us or watching from home. This is how democracy happens, this is how we build a stronger community, and you're all a part of it, so I appreciate that very much. In my two terms on the city council, I've accomplished things that I'm really proud of, but really the proudest thing, the thing I'm proudest of accomplishing is really just being even more involved in our community organizations, as well as the city, and being that conduit to get that information back and forth. In talking to everyone around the district and around the city, I've really learned that no one expects you to have all the answers, no one expects you to be able to solve all their problems right away. But people want to feel heard, people want to feel like their elected officials are accessible and responsive, and that's really what I try to be. I'm running low on time, so I'll just say, please reach out to me if you have any questions, I would love to have a conversation with you. You can find me, district4lool.com. Thank you.
My name is Marco Santonio Candido Jr. I'm one of the candidates for District 8 for city council. Before I say something, I guess just take stock of which candidates for that district race are here. You know, I plan to show up for my community, I plan to take care of the working class people of not only District 8, but, you know, throughout the entire city. I, you know, will be a city councillor after all. Again, my platform is about affordable housing, we need more housing opportunities, you know, our families are struggling, people are being displaced, our homelessness crisis is worsening, we need to grow our tax base. I mean, this is, it is, you know, it's a clear solution to a lot of our problems. You know, we need better public transit, people are struggling to be able to get around, they can't live without a car, our streets are, you know, we're not really connected as communities. If we really want to improve our city and boost our local economy, we need better public transit yesterday. And lastly, we need to properly fund our schools. Cutting millions of dollars every year is, is a good way to put your city in a death spiral. So please vote for me Tuesday, November 4th, and I'd love to be a strong working class fighter for, you know, District 8 and everyone in the city. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Shari O'Connor Barboza. My grandmother was an immigrant from Ireland and came over here on a boat. My husband is an immigrant from Brazil. I speak English, Portuguese and some Spanish, and I would love to represent District 5. My biggest reason for running and why I would, I would love for you to cast your vote for me is to give a voice to all. That's what I've been saying for years, is that everyone needs a voice. We need our schools fully funded, but also we need to update our buildings. I'd like transparency on all levels and equity throughout the city in regards to our green space, our playgrounds and access to services, including fixing our streets and not just putting in speed bumps. We need to fill our potholes. The elderly, the disabled, the working class for before and after-school care, renters unhoused, thank you.
Coming up against that one minute again. So I am just going to finish my conclusion that I started. So again, thank you all for being here. What a great crowd that, that you all showed up for this, it's really important. I want to thank everybody here and everyone watching for coming. Thank you. And can I just have the planning committee raise your hand, because a lot of people put a lot of work into this. Thank you all. And also, very big thank you to our interpreters for putting up with all our rapid-fire questions. Salweth and Claudio, thank you very much.